All right, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:18. And would you please trustee Nakatani provide us with roll call?
President Searnsich Hodge.
Present.
Trustee Abdoli.
Present.
Trustee Yu.
Present.
Trustee Katz.
Present.
And I'm trustee Nakatani, I'm here.
All right, and this evening we will have a closed session beginning shortly, and I'm asking if there's any public comment on closed session items at this time. Seeing no public comment, we will be provided forty-five minutes for this part of our meeting tonight. So I will adjourn this meeting at 5:18. We'll see you at 6:00 PM. Well, good evening. Thank you for being here. I am Dr. Searnsich Hodge, your board trustee president. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:09. And before I begin, I just wanted to share with you that we are here. There is a lot going on in the world right now, and some of us are here with heavy hearts. So we have empathy for all and appreciate that you're taking the time to be here and have some business to do, so we'll get started. Let's have roll call trustee Nakatani.
President Searnsich Hodge.
Present.
Trustee Abdoli.
Present.
Trustee Yu.
Present.
Trustee Katz.
Present.
And I'm trustee Nakatani, and I'm here.
All right, and next we have any reportable action from closed session would be shared with you. But I'm here to tell you that no action was taken, so we will move on to the next agenda item. We're now going to review BP 1313 Civility, and that's a board policy. Dr. Kaufman will be presenting this item. Dr. Kaufman.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for coming tonight, and we it's fortunately Mill Valley has not been impacted by some of the situations that have been happening at other public committee meetings. But we did want to go ahead and make sure that we drew everyone's attention to our stability policy. We're here for all children. We're here for all families. We're here because we are examples of what it means to be leaders and educators. So I just want to make sure that I call that attention to everyone as we venture forward in our meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Kaufman. And now we'll have the approval of the agenda. The board reserves the right to change the order of any agenda items, and I'm wondering at this time if we have any request to change any agenda items or order. All right, Dr. Kaufman.
I would like to request that we remove item K2 regarding the appointment of a citizens bond oversight committee member.
All right, do I have a motion to move this agenda item?
Some of it.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, so that item will be moved to another agenda. All right, and now we take this opportunity to look at our governance norms and provide inspiration. And so we have trustee Katz, who is going to share some thoughts with us this evening. Trustee Katz.
Thank you. My thoughts tie directly into the topic of stability, and the quotation that inspired me is from James Baldwin. Children have never been very good at listening to their elders, but they have never failed to imitate them. This ties into our norms of we will respect differences, and when we have a difference of opinion, we will debate the facts of the situation and avoid personalities. I was reminded recently of how we often forget that children are watching and absorbing.
I went to a soccer tournament for my eleven-year-old, and during one of the games, the types of things some of the parents of the opposing team were saying were aggressive and frankly inappropriate. And afterwards, the girls all had questions for us along the lines of why would they do that? And who would speak to a kid that way? And we were left having to talk through with them that this was an example of what not to do when it comes to creating a supportive environment for kids. Many people come to board meetings with their kids or join remotely while home with their families, and then their kids become a part of the audience, whether they like it or not. And just like during that soccer game, our children look to us to set the right example, and they will notice and possibly call us out on it if how we behave doesn't align with how we tell them they should behave. And whether they realize it or not, the kids who come to our meetings look to us to understand how adults interact with one another, what the democratic process looks like, and hopefully how to be a good human being and engaged citizen who can effectuate positive change. I'm so grateful that we've been able to come together as a team and to respect one another's difficulties and the various perspectives that we bring to the table. And in today's world, so many people speak to inflame and just to be heard. And whether this stems from one's individual passions or their fears, it's imperative that we focus on how to work with one another in a civil way and come together even through disagreements rather than attack each other in ways that are divisive and separate us. At the end of the day, we all have the same goal of wanting to do what's best for kids, and we can only hope that what we're doing and how we're doing it inspires them.
Yes. Thank you, trustee Katz. Well, now we move on to one of the beautiful elements of our democratic process here in board meetings, and that's communication to the board. So the public has the right to provide public comment on any items at this time that are not on our agenda. And I want to also remind you that if you wish to provide a public comment on agenda items, would you please provide those slips between now and the end of the superintendent's report, which will be after the Mill Valley Teachers Association shares so that we can jump right into the meat of the agenda? So, you know, do we have any public comment on this? No public comment on agenda items not on the agenda? So seeing that, thank you very much, we will now invite our labor partner. The CSEA is here, Pat. Oh, Pat and Dawn, thank you, thank you for coming on up and sharing with us an update to the board on all that is going on with your members. Thank you for being here.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dawn, and I am the district health specialist for Mill Valley School District. I have worked for the Mill Valley School District for four years, and this is my first time at a board meeting. So I will be running for vice president next month for the for the union. And right now I'm a rep, a site representative, and I'm nervous. Someone told me, where is it? Oh, somebody, actually she's not here. She's like, know your audience. I was gonna do a little, but I don't know the audience yet. Don't worry, we'll know each other by the end of the school year.
You are, eh, okay.
First, I would like to thank the Board of Trustees, the district, for our ten percent salary increase. It was much needed and much appreciated. I'm on the negotiating team, so there were a lot of firsts for me, and they were very kind and understanding. And it was my second year doing it, and I think the second year went better than my first year. But I'm learning, and everybody was gracious, you know. So I was gonna say, we met on the field of battle, so I didn't know if that was the audience. But I see Michelle, we met on the field of battle, and we all came back winners, you know. At the end of it, there was no angry, there was no animosity. There was just on my side, you know, in our side, you know. So. Patrick, have a two-minute discussion?
I'm Patrick Baron. I've been a school district employee for thirty-five years at Edna McGuire. And it's nice to meet all of you.
And he forgot to tell you that he's the acting president.
I guess I am.
Okay, so yesterday, Wednesday, October eleventh, was our first official chapter meeting. We discussed some issues. We discussed what the membership, what we see for the future. Unfortunately, because it was the last minute, this is new, you know, since Sandy had retired, and we're just trying to jump in, we didn't get the message out soon enough. So it was a small turnout. So we're gonna have another meeting in two weeks. So we just opened up the ideas of what we're gonna look for in the future. So if you ask me, I'm like, we're getting a Zoom account. And that's important because the meeting ended, the meeting ended before it should have because I only had that forty minutes, and ten minutes was technical. That's right, Zoom helps participation. So that was one of the. But we discussed how to get members to be able to heard better, you know, message board. You know, some chapters, we're talking about how they have website sites and Facebook pages. So we're gonna look into how to make it more inclusive for, I think we have eighty members, so that they can all be heard. And we want to hear them, and we want them to know that we want to hear them. We talked about when things are coming up to make sure that they get on the board at all the sites, the CSC board, so that, you know, and members know to come by. One of the things that they talked about is I'm in front of my computer all the time, and the IAs, the instructional assistants, they don't have computers. So they would have to go on their phone when they go home. They really don't want to check their school email, you know. So just, you know, if we can put it up somewhere so that they know what's going on. We discussed the upcoming elections next year. We discussed how to spend some of the money that we have. And that's everything. So I want to thank you for having me and Pat, and I hope I did what you guys wanted us to do, so.
Thank you. Very informative. Really enjoyed it. Thank you. We're looking forward to seeing you every month and learning more. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
We don't need to be rude, but we have to go.
I did, I did tell them they could leave.
Have a great evening. All right, and Mill Valley Teachers Association co-presidents Erin Fraser and Julie Brummer, welcome, and we look forward to your update. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Awesome. Before we start, we just want to say that our hearts go out to everyone directly and indirectly affected by the war that's broken out in Israel and Gaza. We feel fortunate to work in such a supportive environment where individuals are coming together to support and provide comfort during difficult and scary times. So thank you. On a different note, we wanted to thank the board and Dr. Kaufman for all of the time that you've spent on Measure G efforts. We were able to attend the September board meeting and heard the thoughtful discussion around the future location of the Mill Valley Middle School, as well as the configuration of students during that construction. We were also able to attend the community input sessions two weeks ago. It's clear that our board, Dr. Kaufman, Mr. Arroyo, and the team from ACOM are doing a very thorough job. The in-depth reports that we were able to discuss at the community input sessions helped us understand that the options the district has for a new middle school. Thanks again for offering so many opportunities for our community members to be involved in that communication conversation.
And we wanted to talk about the upcoming school calendars. On Tuesday, we had a very collaborative and productive meeting with Dr. Kaufman to draft the calendars for the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six school years. We greatly appreciate Dr. Kaufman's experience and how she worked diligently with us to represent the needs and interests of all stakeholder groups in the creation of the calendar drafts. As you can see on the agenda, the thought exchange process was open to staff and parents, and the feedback was taken into consideration during the drafting process. We look forward to sharing calendar drafts with MBTA members soon and bringing forward calendars for your approval at a future board meeting.
We are firmly in the middle of the first trimester of learning in all of our schools. Last week during our Wednesday district meetings, the elementary school teachers met with their grade-level colleagues across the district to engage on professional development, on assessment scoring practices. We are all in the process of implementing common formative assessments in math to track student learning across the school district and adjust our instruction accordingly to differentiate the needs of all of our students. Elementary school teachers are looking forward to sharing and celebrating their students' growth at the parent-teacher conferences coming up in November.
We also just wanted to highlight one of the unique learning opportunities in the Mill Valley School District. This year, all MBSD fifth graders will be participating in the outdoor education program at Walker Creek. This week, Strawberry and Tam Valley's fifth graders are there. And next week, Edna and Old Mills' fifth graders will be there, and Park students will attend in the spring. The week at Walker Creek Ranch is truly a highlight of the fifth-grade year, as well as the elementary experience as a whole. In the words of the Walker Creek staff from their website, "At Walker Creek Ranch, the outdoor environment becomes the classroom, and the weather, land, natural communities, water, and sky become the tangible content for the lessons. We take pride in providing hands-on, field-based activities that bring science to life for students." And the MBSD teachers are really excited to see their students thrive in this alternative learning environment and to see them learn more about the world around them, as well as themselves and one another. So thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. All exciting work. All right, and now Superintendent Kaufman will share a report. Dr. Kaufman.
Yes, I will, and I'm gonna have to look at my paper because I forgot my glasses and my water downstairs. So I'm gonna help that, can't see that far. So I'm here this evening to catch you up on some of the work we've been doing just since the start of the school year, and some of you, some of you were there the morning of our kickoff when I had COVID, and we got to meet the entire staff, so I wanted to bring that work front and center. Next slide, please. So we're working on what we are together, right? One of the things we're trying to do is build a community, build transparency, and really understand our purpose for being together. And so one of the things we've identified as an area of focus this year is really together, we're gonna ensure that every student enrolled in Mill Valley district makes at least one year's growth for one year in school. Ideally, they'll make more if they need more, right? And what we did with the staff, district-wide staff, was look at the next two, three questions. One is, what is the important work we did last year? What important work is important work for you this year? And then in one word, what is your hope for this year? So we put everyone in circles. It's something that I think we would like to do for some of our community work with facilities as well and for other things like strategic planning. But in this case, we were able to bring two hundred and fifty people together and do that in circles in a very focused way. Next slide. So our purpose, and what you'll see here is an array of things. These are all the comments that came through from our groups in terms of what was the most important thing we did last year. So we have targeted learning. We have showing up for kids. We have getting organized. We have restorative justice teams. We have equity and inclusion work. We have academic workshop, students recognizing their own learning progress, focusing on reading instruction, focusing on large groups of students regularly. The SANDA system used district-wide, uniform instruction for more students who are creating more coherence and alignment. We have teacher leaders and committees. We are using more and more assessment data, moving away from specific grading to more specific feedback about learning, which is a highly predicted, has a great effect size for kids, and building communist language across the district. In addition, when we continue to look at that same question, building community in spite of staff and curriculum changes, picking monthly themes to tie into assembly and morning announcements, and that speaks to the social-emotional learning curriculum toolkit, as well as some of the diversity, equity, and inclusion work, reaching more students during math time, bringing more games in math time, IXL, providing TK supports for students, bilingual support for students. In the physical education program, they have an incentive program to increase student efforts, funding. And in this case, additionally, the foundation supplemental programs that we have in ways that no other district has. We have many resources that are available to us that districts don't have because of the contributions of our community. Moving away from leveled reading and returning to normal after COVID. And I think that was a huge one for everyone. Our so what is a word bubble, and it is, what is important work for you as you start this year? And what happens when you do a word cloud is the most prevalent terms come up, and they're added together. And so you can see common language came up as a big, we took everybody's responses and put them into a word cloud. I guess I should give that consistency, teacher leaders, toolbox, you know, inclusive mindset, supporting staff, one-to-one support, SANDA. So again, you know, when we talk about what we want to be as a district, we're working on, you know, how do we provide supports for all students? How do we create common language and understanding? How do we create shared curricula? And our teachers' reflections and our classified staff reflections certainly resonated in that trend. Next slide, you can go ahead and throw them all out there for me. So our what, the work we're working on now and will be working on for several years. Together, we're gonna build a TK through eight guaranteed and viable curriculum. And what does that mean? Well, it means that there's an aligned articulated program in tier one, which is really the best first instruction, right? We call it tier one, but it's what you get in your classroom every day with your general education teacher. And that's aligned across the grade levels and content standards and curriculum that we have instructional standards, instructional schedules that ensure the time to teach. So the guarantee, of course, is that the kids all get uniform curriculum and consistency. The viability comes with actually having the time in your instructional day to do that because we can proclaim any number of things, but if we don't have the time to teach the kids, it doesn't, the programs don't work. And then working for systems and practices that meet the needs of all learners. Again, that's part of the work. And then, as you heard earlier this evening from our MBTA partners, you know, assessing to measure student mastery, because again, we do want to be able to say that every child makes a year's growth for year's instruction, and those who need more get more. Next slide. So we asked our staff some feedback questions, and you will see in the informational report later in the meeting, there's just some summaries of the staff survey as well. But, you know, we asked our staff, how do you believe a guaranteed and viable curriculum positively impacts learning outcomes? And this is a quote from a teacher, having a guaranteed baseline of what every student is working towards is very important. Teachers don't have to teach it all the same way. Teachers still can have autonomy, but it keeps things focused. Of course, the viable part is essential because if you create curricular priorities, but people don't have the time or resource to do it, it's nothing but words on a page. And the, another quote is, next one, go ahead and advance. "I think it's important that our students in the district get an equitable education regardless of which teachers they have." Obviously, every teacher will be a little bit different and will have their own styles and strengths and weaknesses. But if it's a completely different experience for students, depending on which class they are placed in, that doesn't reflect well on our district. So some just initial thoughts about where we're headed. And a final thought. If teachers are all teaching the same thing, all students will be guaranteed to be exposed to all the same material and not subject to biases and preferences of just one teacher they have. It also makes the development of student skills align from grade to grade if the same curriculum is used by various grade levels. So again, when we talk about wanting to have a year's growth for a year's time, being able to provide similar instruction and uniform standards access is gonna help us then diagnose, well, when a kid's not getting it, what have they missed? Because it's not, it's not independent of their actual curriculum, and it's not independent from room to room. And then here's our so what. So we asked in one word, what is your goal for this year? And I think you could read that for yourselves. But definitely about almost a hundred days into my tenure, I would say that this is a very joyful and positive place, and it continues to be an honor to be here. So that is my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kaufman, and very uplifting. Appreciate it. Appreciate all the hard work. All right, and so now we are going to move into approval of the consent agenda. But first, I want to ask if there is any interest in moving any agenda item or deleting.
I just have one question on one of the consent agenda items. Does that mean it has to be moved? Or can I just ask a question on one item?
Feel free to ask the question.
Okay, this is a consent, I think, agenda item eight. That is the budget approval. I noticed that the projected assessment growth is six point three or something from the county, right, for this year? And that's a little bit higher than what we thought, right? Okay, I just, I just want to rewrite that.
Okay, and your answer was yes for those folks who were on Zoom?
Yes, it's still a projection. So basically, with the close of the prior fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three, they base their projection on that. But again, tax bills are going out in October, and so there may be further adjustments. But generally speaking, that estimation from the county office is plus or minus one percent.
Okay, so it's a little bit better than we thought. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, trustee Yu. All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
All right, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Thank you, trustee Abdoli. All right, and so now we will move to H, student learning and school programs. And we will have Kate Sprague coming to present this item. Thoughtful Exchange Feedback School Calendars, welcome.
Thank you. Kate Sprague, Director of Educational Technology and Accountability. And I am here to go through the results of the Thought Exchange, which was the platform that we use this year to gather feedback from staff and from parents, as you heard MBTA reference, to the development of the calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five. So the question that we asked in Thought Exchange is, what are the most important priorities we should consider as we develop our school calendar for next year? And the way that Thought Exchange works is that the people who interact with it see that question and get to give their thought, and then they interact with other people's thoughts and rate them to say whether they agree with that or not. So if you go to next slide, I'll thank you. This slide is perfect. So we had, at the end, we had one hundred and sixty-seven total participants. These slides were provided just before it ended on Friday. One hundred and sixty-five participants, and they provided one hundred and forty-six total thoughts, which was almost a thought per participant. Some people only rated thoughts, but it led to four thousand five hundred and forty-one ratings of those different thoughts, which means that each participant rated about twenty-seven different thoughts, which is a great engagement according to the metrics of the system. That means people were engaged and thoughtful. And we had, of those responses, we had staff members and parents and some people who were both, which is why you see a total number there of greater than one hundred and sixty-five participants. Next slide, please. The key thoughts that came out of this, so these were the highest-ranked thoughts, were that we need to align with the TAM Union High School District. And the second most highly-rated thought said the same thing, coordination with TAM High School District calendar. And then the third most highly-rated thought was keep Thanksgiving week as a full week off. Some of you might remember that we did not always have it as a full week off. So people like that. And then there were other thoughts that also ranked highly, but were not the highest-ranked, things like following along with other schools in the county as much as possible, which particularly helps employees who may not live in Mill Valley but who have students in other school systems. There were also thoughts around recognizing the Jewish holidays more in our calendar if possible, and then help for working families whenever possible in alignment of the calendar. And the last slide, please. One of the other things that Thought Exchange provides is a word bubble. You've seen a few of these tonight, but this sees, this shows you some of the words that bubbled up in multiple thoughts. So TAM and coordination, you can also see here districts and county, children, siblings, Halloween and PD. People like having, well, in particular, our staff members are excited to have the day after Halloween off to really be able to focus on professional development at a good point in the year, and also for families to not feel like they have to go to school the next day. Yeah, it kind of works out for everyone. So that is our first Thought Exchange, and we're looking forward to using this platform to engage with community members on other topics throughout this year and moving forward.
Fantastic. Thank you. And now I want to ask my colleagues if anyone has a follow-up question or comment, trustee Katz?
My only, I think my only question is, is this planning just for a single year? Are we doing a multi-year?
This was just asking for priorities around when we develop a calendar. And I think the superintendent and our labor groups will determine what makes sense to bring to the board, whether it's a year or two.
I have a question. Can you share how this Thought Exchange process came about? It sounds unique and interesting.
Well, Thought Exchange is a platform that's been around for a little while now. It is developing more with the advent of AI because it's able to take the thoughts and generate some summaries and things. I actually engaged with it as a parent during COVID. The Santa Felicity Schools District used it to gather thoughts. to gather thoughts from families as they were looking at returning students to the classroom. And I found it really fascinating. I mean, I do love data and things like that, but I found it really fascinating to see what other people were thinking. And for the school district on the back end, there's some really great analytics around the alignment of thoughts and what things are common and what are not. So it, it was something that I think Elizabeth has experience with as well, and something that we thought would be a benefit to the community as we look at really transparent engagement and engagement of different stakeholder groups. And also knowing that we have lots of things to engage upon as we look at a new LCAP, a new strategic plan, measure G, things like the calendar, just lots of topics where we, where we need an efficient way to engage with our community.
Thank you, trustee cats.
I just have one, one more question. When it comes to keywords that come up in here, is there a way for the system to be able to group things together? Because it, it does look like there are some places where it's like, what, what question or what idea was this coming from?
Yes.
So.
Yes. Yeah. The analytics include things like themes, so it groups themes together. So for example, I can tell you that around things like families and families coming up as a theme, there were around 10 thoughts that had to do specifically with that. So there are some further analytics that depending on the topic, we could certainly go into more detail about.
And I just had one comment, which is to the extent that we could have two-year out calendars, I've heard from some of our after-school programs that they need to plan ahead and not having the two-year lead as, as a challenge. So if we can try to have that, it would be great.
Okay, great feedback on it.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further questions. Thank you very much. Very informative. Appreciate it. And now we're going to go to staff PD exit ticket feedback. Dr. Kaufman will present this item. It's just informational.
Just an information-only item and won't require discussion. I just wanted to make sure when we survey staff about PD, I want to make sure that we loop it back for you. I think this, we had a limited response, response rate, but again, I just wanted to make sure in the interest of transparency that, you know, as we, as we look at evaluating the work we do together as a district, that the board is aware of feedback for, you know, events that we host and the customer service we provide our clients, so.
All right. Thank you. So now we're going to go on to facilities and the first item under I is measure G update. And Julio Arroyo will present this item. It's a report only, no action is necessary from the board. Welcome, welcome.
I'm going to introduce, if it's okay. These tables, I need a booster seat. I have to lean over a binder. I wanted to lead into this conversation. Just to, I'll, I'll, I'll do the transition part for each of the segments before I hand it over to Julio. And in this case, I really wanted the, the community to know a few things. First of all, we have, you know, we've had some conversations with community members who have requested certain additional studies. And as noted in those conversations with the individuals in the past couple of weeks, we are coming together with some proposals that for the board to consider about doing additional feasibility studies and potential plan development for more than one site. So I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. We, we met, I think, last Friday with an individual who requested that and our board agenda was going out, or maybe it was last Thursday. And so we, you know, we'll be bringing that forward at the November meeting. I also want to say that, just to remind everyone that we do have a measure G page that we're collating everybody's responses into FAQs that are available and that we're doing our very best to keep up in real time. There'll probably going to be about a week lag and when we respond, but the community also needs to know, I think that the board is apprised of responses to each of those things. So while we may not deliberate ad nauseam when we're in the room, we are not deliberating because we've done the work of informing our board and our community along the way. So I, I certainly don't want folks to think that when, when the board doesn't ask a ton of questions, it's not because they haven't been informed, because they probably get 50 pages from you a week right now, facility. So anyway, I'll, I'll hand it over to Julio now.
Thank you. Good evening. Julio Arroyo, Director of Maintenance, Operations and Safety. And I'm here tonight with our ACOM team, Brett Mitchell, our principal in charge, as well as Sandrine Hitchcock, who's running our measure gene program as our program manager. So next slide, please. So for tonight, our goal is to go over our measure G projects, be able to go over our timeline as well as tonight, we're also going to have a presentation for site selection for the middle school as well as interim housing and validation options. We're looking to gain approval from the board of the, our lease leaseback processes coming to an end tonight for our two vendors. And so we're looking to gain approval for our middle school vendor, as well as our modernization venture, which is covers all our elementary schools. And I'll go into that topic a little bit more in detail when it comes up. And then we're going to be reviewing our next steps. And so really this will be an opportunity for the board to ask questions as we're going through our presentations and then review any upcoming timelines, as well as our critical, critical milestones are going to be coming up. Next slide, please. So this is our updated measure G master schedule. So we will be continually bring this to you every month as a part of our measure G update. So what this reflects here are the two different phases that we look at for each school site. It's our pre-construction and design phase, which we're in now for the middle school, as well as we're going to be going into with approval tonight of our two vendors for Tam Valley and Strawberry. So really it's our opportunity to work with our architects. And now that we're going to have our, our two general contractors on board for them to work collaboratively together as we design. And we're going through that process as we also include environmental work when it's time. And so this is reflecting just kind of what we're looking at over the next couple of years, as well as for construction and as well as for design and planning phases. And so this will be something that we update every month and bring over to show if there's any changes that happen month to month or any changes in, that are reflective in the schedule. And I'm going to have Sandrine talk about the middle school project here and just kind of go over our high-level schedule.
Sure. So Sandrine Hitchcock, ACOM Program Manager. To go back to the master schedule, just an update, there are no updates from what you saw last month as of now. But we thought this time we, we would show you kind of a more detailed middle school schedule that shows an overlay with the agency approvals. So there are many agencies we're going to go through for the design of the school and approval of the plans, et cetera. And what I, what we're trying to convey here is that is typically a process that runs in parallel with design. It's not a linear process where we go through agencies and then design or vice versa, and then build is really in parallel. So the environmental review is typically done or starts at the end of conceptual design when we, we know where generally the new building would be located. Because that gives us more definition that we can work from. In this case, because we've heard a lot of comments and a lot of concerns from the community, we've decided to start that process earlier and engage an environmental engineer. We are receiving a proposal this week and we will be engaging him to evaluate the existing data that is available for the site as well as preparing a plan that we will review with DTSC, which is the Department of Toxic Substances Control. And then make recommendations. And as we continue to work with this consultant through the Sequo process, he'll be engaged in making recommendations for monitoring as needed. So again, we're just wanted to show you the process, the typical process and giving you an update that we're adapting right now to, because we've heard a lot of comments from the community. Also, not on there, but we, we are engaged in conversations with the county and the city. So we have had several meetings so far and will continue to do so.
Next slide, please. Thank you. And this is an update of our different consultants and our experts we have on board. And so just starting off with our architect and engineering team. So we are in the process of later this month, starting off are the kickoff is for the Tam Valley and Strawberry Point projects. And we have JK Architect Engineering, which is a firm that was selected for those projects. And so that will start the process to start the planning pieces. And we will then at a later stage then bring in, we've met with also the principal, but then also bring them in to be able to get feedback and start the process of how we kind of get dialogue from the staff and kind of build that in and then future community meetings as well. And so those are the two first elementary school sites that we're going to start planning on. And as well as a discussion around our middle school that we've brought the last couple of board meetings and what we're working with Leonakis, who will be here at the next agenda, the next two agenda items to go over the site validation. And so we have our conceptual design, like Sandrine was saying, that is ongoing. And so those are the two firms that we're currently working on for those sets of projects. And we have our lease leaseback process where we're looking to select two of our general contractors. And so we started this process in September, in, in August, we received support proposals September 18th. We went through interviews. Thank you, trustee Nakatani for being part of the interview panel. And we selected two firms, one firm that's going to be in charge of the middle school. And then another firm that's going to be in charge of all our modernization projects, which is all of our elementary school projects that come out of our priority one facility master plan. And so that will come at the next board agenda item for request for approval. And then we have end to action, who we worked with, with our September 27th community meeting. We're going to go a little bit into our site validation presentation. There's a couple of slides where they just talk about some of the feedback that we got from those meetings and just be able to, be able to provide that for the community and board tonight. And then our next meeting is October 25th. And so really our sequence is having a board meeting, getting, making some decisions, coming back to the community to be able to update them as well as talk about next steps that have been shared with the board. And then ongoing similar as Sandrine said, I won't touch too much of it, but just this is the general work that we're going to be doing around environmental work and some of the services as well as the planning stages for a project information system. So a dashboard that will be able to share with the community to be able to highlight the work that's being done and provide easy access to updates. And this is another slide that we also continue to update as we come for our measure G updates. And so this is the topics that we are right now have on, as our, on our timeline for board agenda items. And so as you see, next, next month, we would be looking at getting the approvals, if, if approved tonight for the two firms, we would come back with those contracts for approval to the school board for the November board meeting. So that would be approving the two general contractors for the lease leaseback agreements. We would have Leonakis come back to do another design update. So this is just a schedule that we're looking at as we're moving towards next year to be able to and to be able to update the board and the topics that we're looking to bring forward. Thank you. So the next, oh, perfect. Yep, we're ready for that. Yeah.
All right. Thank you for that update. And now what we're going to do is engage the public. We have some public comment. There are five people. So each person will be provided three minutes and it shows on this handy clock somewhat behind trustee cats. So thank you for limiting your questions. So what we have done is we have a number of comments and we've identified that there are some for a measure G update and others for site validation location and others for the Mill Valley interim housing. Would that be correct? Okay. So there are some comments that did not indicate an item. It just says facilities. So we're going to ask you to come up for this measure G update. All right. So and we have a chair here and I'm assuming that that mic is on. Alrighty, then let's get started. Brian O'Sullivan, please come on up. Thank you, Brian. And if you could kindly folks state your full name and your association with the school, or if not, your affiliation, and then we'll start the clock.
Hello.
Hello.
How you doing?
Great.
I'm Brian O'Sullivan, a parent of two grade school kids at Old Mill. By now, each of you on the board have received a letter from my wife. I'm not going to go over it. But you have received it and there's a lot of information that I ask you to go through and read. One of the things I want to remind each of you is that you are obligated by California law to follow the California Department of Education site selection process that requires you to go over 12 subsections in a public forum. If you'd like, I have that here. And as of today, I have not seen the school board go through that. Not in any of your latest meetings. So I want to remind you that that is, you are obligated to do that. Secondly, from everything we've read pertaining to, let's not, let's cut the comments, please. Pertaining to.
Excuse me, there won't be any
When someone's, when someone's going.
With the school board. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Please continue.
Yep. So if you look at the toxicology reports of this property, they would no way, shape or form align with current California code for whether it's arsenic, mercury or lead. So you can decide whether you want to build a, a new facility on this site. That is ultimately your decision. I'm not sure your budget's going to be able to handle that by removing, remediating all of the land from here and then refilling it and then building a new building. However, there is zero chance you can ever put children on a construction site that's a former toxic, that is a toxic waste site in this town. You cannot house the kids here. One last point. When they built this school, the portable houses were act, for the middle school were actually put at Edna School in the 1967. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And next, may we have Anthony Brazella, please. Anthony.
The big act of Paulo. My name's Anthony Brazella. I also have two children in Old Mill School. My understanding of this process is still being formulated, but I think just being here today, this is my first meeting and wanted just to get some clarity on, I noticed the environmental focus that you guys had called out from the team on my right here. And was just curious when looking at the timeline that was laid out, you had that slated for out in the March, April timeframe, if I read that correctly, and wanted to get some clarity on why that was so far out and not up front in the timeline as we continue in this process.
Thank you, Anthony. Oh, for those folks who have never come to a board meeting, I'm sorry, I forgot to share that we are not able to respond to public comment at this time as it is, it, it is, that's that, so that folks can have their, their opportunity to share and then we provide feedback at a later time. Our superintendent is also listening and there may be opportunities later in our conversations for us. But once you're sharing this, we can't have a back and forth conversation. So.
When can we expect a response? Is there a timeline that you can publicly state that we will get a response back within?
So I can't comment on that. Thank you for your comments. So we can hear your comments and then we can, I'm happy to address that after the public comment session.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. All right. Next is Borianna. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Could you, could you share it with me? Okay, thank you.
Hello, everybody. I am Borianna Fackler. Thank you for your time and for this opportunity to air out some of our concerns. I didn't realize that it's not a question and answer session. So I'm just going to do a public comment. I am very encouraged by the open process and the fact that you are willing to engage with us. I think that you hear our comments and our concerns, and that's very important to us as parents, as citizens here. I look forward to more information on site evaluations and I hope that the board is listening to the public and considering several sites and looking for alternatives because. and looking for alternatives because we have an amazing opportunity here today. We have a decent pot of money and we can do better for our kids. We can look what we have in our town, how we value our kids and where we want to put them through middle school. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And next, Boone Spooner, please.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to second what Boreana just said. I I do really appreciate.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you share who you are and your affiliation?
Sure. My name is Boone Spooner. I'm a parent of uh two Old Mill students who will be at uh Mill Valley Middle School, hopefully sometime in the future. Um, and I was able to make the last meeting. Thank you. Uh, I wanted to say thank you for the process. Um, also thank you to all of you who provided, I think, some answers to questions that many of us had in the last uh meeting, which I do appreciate. Um, the comment I wanted to make is fundamentally that I feel like there's two big problem buckets uh that I would love the board to consider. One is where do we build the new school, which I think you're doing the right work, figuring out what is the right location, uh where the school uh school should sit. Is it high enough to avoid floods, et cetera? The other is what to do with the children during the construction. And I I don't feel like that issue is being addressed well enough at the moment. Fundamentally, um, you know, if you look through, I believe this is the document, uh board of trustees document that was provided. Uh, this is the one from ACOM perhaps. And there's some things I don't really understand in it. One thing I wanted to point out. Um, for example, it says, what do we know? Possible landfill such as refuse, rubble, or manmade debris. I'm pretty sure this is a confirmed landfill and definitely has some toxins in there. But I I just want to understand why we would sort of not directly address that. Um, the second is, um, you know, what do we know that this is? Parents are concerned about site disruption, et cetera, et cetera, release of landfill related air quote toxins. My understanding from having been an English major and and actually researching the internet is that when you use quotes around a single word, it generally means that the author does not believe in the stated word. So I felt that was a little disrespectful to parents that had come here with serious concerns. Um, and then finally, I would like to know, and perhaps ACOM could talk to this, uh not now, I understand. Uh, if you have done a similar job housing students on a possible toxic land site. And you know what those remediations looked like, what were those considerations, what data went into it? Um, again, I'm fully supportive of this. I mean, we all voted, I think many of us for measure G and we want our schools to be better. We care deeply. I know you care deeply about our students. You've probably all had students in this school system as well. Um, I fully trust in your deep care and appreciation for this problem. I just want to know that we can separate where we build the school from how we take care of our children during that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And now Chris Bailey.
Hi there. My name is Chris Bailey. I have an Old Mill student in fourth grade and I have a seventh grader here at the middle school. Uh, I'm here purely as a parent and taxpayer and citizen. Many of you guys know me. I also serve as an alternate on the citizens bond oversight committee, but I'm not here representing that at all. So I think I've met with many of you and echo many of the same things that Boreana and Boone brought up. You guys are educators, your parents, your citizens here. This is a very complicated problem and opportunity at the same time. My whole career for twenty years has been doing infrastructure investment uh within renewable energy. I am very used to dealing with very complicated problems when it comes to permitting, when it comes to environmental phase ones, when it comes to phase twos, remediation plans, how do you go and entitle a land? So I'm I'm very in the weeds on how you do development and construction. Uh, and this is for very simple solar plants. We're literally putting racks up and we're not housing our children there. And so I think many of the questions that the community I would uh say are asking are extremely legitimate. I've invested eight billion dollars over my career in renewable energy uh with some of the top investors in the world. And I don't share that to brag. I share it to when you do a diligence process with rigor, you actually go and find the right pathway. And that is simply what I have been asking since really May of twenty twenty two, uh when I first reached out to uh Dr. Berman and expressed some of my concerns, which really had to do with not trying to lead uh the witness to the right answer, but had to do with, let's go and figure out what studies do you actually do early in a process? Those are typically environmental. I would never go and invest in uh buy lease option a site until I had a phase one. And if needed, a phase two environmental study done on that site. And so that's something that in general, I all my projects are about thirty acres of land that I invest in. It costs about thirty thousand dollars to do an environmental study. You guys might have very different requirements here because of CQ and I recognize that those uh can add cost. But there are ways before you go and launch into a full CQ process that you can actually answer these questions uh and really answer them in a way that's data driven. And so that's really what I ask. Uh, I have started a petition online. Uh, we now have a hundred signatures. I sent an email to the board. I also have a hard copy I can leave with you. It really is just parents asking the same thing. We're not saying that the middle school isn't the right place to build. We're not saying that the concerns of the Edna community are not important. We're saying let's go do a data driven approach. We recognize there are limitations. I believe the bond funds need to be spent by twenty twenty seven. Uh, there are limitations that we have to look into on traffic, archaeological dig issues at Edna. These are all real concerns. Where would you even move the kids if Edna students were to be repopulated? We are not making light of any of the complex kind of chess moves that would have to be made if the middle school was not seen to be the appropriate place.
Thank you for your questions and comments. Thank you very much. All right, and that ends our public comment. Oh, okay. So that ends our public comment. Um, and we do appreciate uh you uh providing that public comment. And we're going to do this consistently uh before the superintendent report so we can um sort through them in the future. So I hope that I will have the opportunity to hear from you again uh and just make sure to get those comments in before the superintendent report. And so now we are going to go to our next item. Okay, there's, there's no one online. All right. So this was a um a report. And so if you do have board questions, um, this is the time and just let me know by raising your hand and we'll make sure that we can get those answered quickly. All right. Let's start with trustee Nakatani.
Thank you. Uh, I know what CQ is. But for the benefit of my everyone else here in the room, if you could run through a secret process for a project, a DSA project, a school project, and how that's different from other projects.
Is that a question?
It is a question if Sandrine and Brett could explain, you know, the the that process on a DSA school and why we do it and the way we do it.
So as many mentioned, schools are different than private developments. Uh, there is a different process, different agencies we need to go through, um DTSC being one. And I think Laura can help answer the question too. Uh, but uh.
She's coming up.
And I think Chris Bailey mentioned phase one, phase two, which is something we're going to go through, which is uh essentially coming up with a plan, evaluating all the other criteria, all the data we have, doing more testing, doing more uh reporting, and then coming up with a plan meeting with DTSC and uh essentially um adding any requirements as needed and then uh implementing that plan. So uh and I think there were questions uh around interim housing on site. This is something that would be reviewed during phase one, uh whether possible or not. And if possible, what are the mitigating uh measures that would be in place? And obviously, this is public information. This is going to be shared. So that's generally what the process is. And it typically, we again, we typically start the process at the end of concept designs so that we have a general idea of what the project, where the what the site would look like, where the building would look like, so we can um quantify and locate or be more detailed on the description of the project. Laura, would you like to add anything?
And if Laura, you could identify yourself and uh for the public and the record.
Laura Noss, Principal Architect Leonakis. So um generally, the process is the same. However, we have a few more um lenses on the CQ process. One is the um Sandrine mentioned the Department of Toxic Substance Control or DTSC. You have two lenses on that process. Not only do they have the ability to comment in the public arena during CQ, but they are also mandatory in their review on anyone seeking um access to uh state funding. So you'll have two funnels technically there. The second is the Department of Education, again, different than CQ. You are required to demonstrate your um either exemption from CQ, which we will not, or in this case, what your environmental process is to uh the California Department of Education before they will approve your um submittal to go forward for accessing those state funds. So uh in addition to what the normal processes of archaeological water um uh traffic being a big one, their eyes will be on that as well. They'll be looking at the data and then making their recommendations on the site for everything from vehicular and student circulation to um acceptance. There was a mention of the funnel of the twelve points. Those are applicable to new sites, uh but it is the lens that the Department of Education will look at in a refreshed site. So please know that those uh items will be commented on in not only their preliminary review of the project, but in their final approval before it can move forward in state funding. And that means that they will comment on it, but they will also review all the mitigation um proposals in order to see if they believe those are adequate um before we can move forward.
So trustee Nakatani, did that answer your question?
Yes, that was great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee, you?
So first, I'd like to clarify that Natalie, myself, and Ellie have kids in fourth grade. So our kids will be directly impacted by this. And there is no way, as far as I'm concerned, this board is going to make any decision that is going to compromise the safety of our children, literally our children. So one clarifying question I like to make is it's been insinuated during the comments that we are skipping some sort of necessary site inspection and due diligence process. And as a private equity distressed debt investment, the investor for almost thirty years, I know due diligence. So I want to make sure that our team is doing the appropriate due diligence. And and uh could you highlight to us whether we are skipping any steps uh to compromise the process and endanger the safety of our children?
Uh Superintendent, hold on Superintendent Kaufman would like to interject before you take that question. Sorry.
I I think we have, it's a, there's a language confusion because when we're speaking of site validation, this many and and Laura just addressed refreshing a site. We have to go through all of those same criteria. So when we were told that we don't have the evidence of a site selection yet, that is because we haven't gone through our site validation process at this point. That said, all of our schools are also already sites. So um there's sort of a a another element in there in terms of, and that's why we've been referring to it as validation. And that's just the semantics we've tried to come up with that hopefully makes sense to people. We're not going to select it because we already have sites. All of our district has sites all over. We don't have extra property, but we want to validate it through the appropriate mechanisms, which are, we're just briefly addressed by by Laura.
Thank you. And now, please, Brett.
I would just say that the the process of school construction, we do, I've been in school construction for many years. The process of school construction is highly regulated and and highly um supervised to to verify that the regulations are being followed. And in no case are we skipping any steps, nor would uh the process that's been established by the state, the Department of State Architect, that there's no way that it could be eliminated and still get gain access, approval for a site, approval for a building, or approval for contracts. So it's it's highly regulated and is closely watched and very closely monitored.
Thank you. Trustee Katz?
Thank you. Um, first, I just want to comment and say thank you for being responsive because it sounds like you have been listening very closely to the concerns of the community and you did address that you are moving up some of the review around the environmental concerns that there are. And so um I appreciate the responsiveness to that. Um, and that is outside of what you would typically do because you are listening to this community. So thank you. You did mention with the next community outreach meeting being on October twenty fifth. I'm curious when, and I don't know where to look right now, um when we are going to start communicating that. And also if there is going to be a communicated agenda of what you are planning to cover. Is it stuff that we've discussed in this meeting plus hearing from the community at that point? Or will will there be additional topics there? Because I have heard from some of our constituents that they can't necessarily make it to the board meetings. I know we've been very, you you've been very intentional in having these outreach meetings to hear and engage and have more of that dialogue. And so as much as we can try and get that out there so that people know if there's something that they are concerned about in particular, if it will be covered um or can be bring it up, that would be helpful.
So let's have uh Superintendent Kaufman answer that question and then please identify who on the panel will do follow up. Thank you.
I'm just going to jump in because part of the, part of the context for those of you who aren't board meeting regulars is that the board can't engage with the public, right? So what we have done is we've tried to put these community meetings in between board decision making times. The challenge of that dynamic is that we also don't want to go to the community with something we haven't shown the board, right? So we don't want to ask you all what you think um and come up with a plan uh and then find out it's not something the board would support. So so the next meeting will be um October twenty fifth and we will be addressing the concerns we're hearing now to the extent we can. And and then we will be trying to potentially showcase next steps in the process so people know where to engage. The November second board meeting, I think we'll be selecting our lease leaseback contractor contracts. We'll be approving that agreement. I don't think we'll be doing a whole lot more on facilities at that meeting. And then then we'll begin with a much more inclusive process. Or while while the site assessment is going forward or the site validation or the site selection process, whatever we call it, is going forward, we will be getting, looking at the design and concept of what do we want our schools to look like in the future. So that'll be a a different type of iterative process. There will be meetings, there'll probably be thought exchange, there'll probably be scenarios sent out with feedback asked. So know that it's, we're very early in the process of this work, but we're trying to create forums where you can come ask questions because we know this is a very static and frustrating context to 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 engage in big issues.
Thank you very much. And now could we have um the, your question answer?
Oh, one quick follow up as part of that.
Okay.
Any, any reports around um toxicity, anything like that? Just those will be posted publicly so that there will be full transparency to the community around anything that is uncovered?
Absolutely. I would say ongoing. Right now, um, we will be providing. I didn't ask for permission. I'm sorry. I just.
You have permission.
I'm not, I'm not doing a good example.
You have permission.
Sorry, I'm breaking my rules.
That's all right.
Um, it's been known to happen around me. Um, so the, I think what we're, we're trying to do is collate everything we've, that's been historical. And then I've been reading them and summarizing them and sending them to these people to make sure that my analysis is correct. And then as we do that, they will finish vetting the summaries and we will put the little executive summary and then we'll put the report on our website. And those are really, it's an DTSC report from um the preliminary assessment for site validation for or site assessment selection that includes um elements of the Mill Valley Middle School, but also the Mill Valley Community Center. So we have that. And then within those reports, you'll have a, you know, geotechnical, hydrological, environmental, some soil toxicity. Um, I've learned more. I've learned more about chromium or barium, copper, lead. So all of that will be, you know, it's out there and, and we will provide the best summary we can of that on the website in the very near future.
Thank you, Dr. Kaufman. I did want our panel to respond to Dr., uh, uh, Trustee Katz's question. If, hey, if, if there was some additional information you could provide the board?
Right. And talking about the upcoming community meeting, and I think Laura had shared that before in the last meeting, but we have outlined community engagement plan that will be in the presentation today. And essentially, the next meeting will essentially give a measure T update. It will also present the content of this board meeting presentation and also the talk about essentially opportunity for engaging into the design in the future. And we also talked about, we will not be through the process with the environmental engineer we're onboarding as of this week or next. If we have any data we can share, we will. But as we're getting new information, we will share along the way.
Thank you. Trustee Abdoli had a question. Trustee Abdoli?
It was, I guess, a question and a comment. I mean, the only thing I ever hear about CEQA is that it is the most robust, overcumbersome process that the state legislature is constantly getting pushback, even from our public institutions to revise and address. So, you know, curious about your feedback because to me, it sounds like this is an incredibly legally mandated thorough requirement. So I'm not sure where the concern that we're somehow going to stick our kids on some, you know, skirt the law would be, just curious if I'm missing something about CEQA.
Yeah.
I think you're correct that it is a very robust process. It also by definition is public and transparent. So there is comment periods, there is public hearings, as well as the full exposure of all of the summary studies and the background studies. So all of the things that we mentioned are circulated for comment from each of those agencies. And so in that collection, we will get formal comments that will, we hope, align with all the preliminary work we'll have done with city, county, and DTSC and other agencies to put in writing their direct feedback, but also their comments on what will be the mitigation measures that will also be outlined in CEQA and any ongoing monitoring or any actions that will be required for the life of the project.
Thank you. Trustee Nakatani has a question?
Sorry, it's more just of a, of a comment, like, not so much Laura, but Brett, Sandrine, and Julio know, I've been, I've been impatient and chomping at the bit, wanting information. Then, you know, I had to take a step back and respect the process that we've hired you to do. And, you know, this is the timeline. I, I understand, it is the timeline. There's a, there's a desire to want to know everything now so we can, you know, take that information and we don't fill that ambiguity, the unknown with false ideas because that's what the human brain will do when they're not given the information. So thank you. Because I know, you know, in addition to CEQA, there's DSA. And that's no joke either. So this is, you know, this is not the same thing as a commercial project down on Miller or Camino Alto or anything like that. And this is not like anyone's house. It's complete, it's a complete different piece. So thank you.
I did have a question for anyone on the panel because I went to school here. So I spent four years here. My sisters went to school here. My daughter went to school here. And I just want to be sure that the comments that I heard, I heard some concern that we're actually sitting now on a toxic waste dump. I mean, maybe I was misunderstanding what I was hearing, but I was hearing an anxiety that we've already picked this site, it's a toxic waste dump, and, you know, we're walking down this treacherous path. Can you share with me, because I have just returned from overseas, so I have not done the kind of due diligence that Dr. Kaufman has, but I will, as your board member promised to do so, though it's not my wheelhouse. Can you share with me, though, I looked at the timeline that some of our community members shared in emails around toxic reports, and they seem to end at 2000 or 2001 or something. So I just wondered if you could share with us, are we on a toxic waste dump? And to the best of your knowledge, based on your evaluation of current, you know, information? And, and then moving forward, when can we expect if this is the site that through the validation process, when might we expect some update on, on this issue? And I'm, you know, as a layperson, you know, I'm doing my best to explain what I feel is some kind of anxiety people have. So maybe some facts and follow-up would be helpful.
Sure. Happy to share what we know as of today. There is a lot of documentation, a lot of reports on DTSC website that is made public. There's a 314-page, 315-pages report. But what we know is that there has been testing over the years, over decades. We know that, yes, there has been testing on, we know there is lead, there is zinc, there is copper, that there are quantities that are above, that were marked as above normal quantities, but the majority were not. The findings, and I would have to have the report in front of me in the summary, but Dr. Kaufman has it. There is, there are measures in place out of those reports, talking about measure in place about methane and how it is being handled, which is a standard procedure. What else? I think there were comments from DTSC that in the last report that they haven't, they hadn't found anything that were, that was unhealthy for people. I would have to find the right wording. But essentially, yes, there, there is presence of elements and just like there is on any site. The finding is that the dump was not toxic waste, dump, it was household waste, there is metal. So that, that's what we know so far. We, we are going to engage an environmental consultant to review it and give his recommendation. So the process is going to be, we're engaging him right now for a first step, essentially where he's going to review the information, come up with a plan, we're going to meet with DTSC, come up with recommendations. And that's going to be about six to eight weeks. And following that meeting with DTSC and everybody agreeing on the plan moving forward, there will be testing. We understand there would be about 50 samples taken on site as, as well as air testing. And then we would follow the, the plan agreed to with DTSC.
Thank you. Thank you. That, that helps me with my anxiety. Dr. Kaufman, did you want to add to that?
Just a quick comment. We will be providing copies of the reports that are already on, but the summaries as well. And so one of the things you can read when it's up there, I have three different summaries of studies that basically just reference the conclusions from each of those analyses that were conducted in the past. Again, very similar to what we're going to have to do, but you'll have the historical information. And in, in essence, the ratings were low or no risk. So I think the biggest concern is metals in the soil. And I think for the most part, those are all well below the, the fill line because they were already mitigated. The challenge will just be, and you'll see later tonight, we, we aren't sure what that will have, be like during construction. And so that is why we have not specified. You will see our language, again, very careful language. We are asking the board this evening to approve the configuration of sixth or eighth-grade students so that we know what our target is, right? We want to put our kids together, we want to keep them together. Whether or not they're together on this site during construction remains to be seen because we don't know the answer to that right now. So, you know, that's, but they'll be there. It's, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a, it's, it's in Elizabeth Kaufman language, so I'm happy to try to answer if you have questions, but you will have the analysis.
Thank you. And do we have another question from?
No, I just want to thank Dr. Kaufman, actually. She read hundreds of pages of reports and she summarized it for us in five pages. And so that's a feat. Thank you.
And she's filled it all, like, most of my questions other than one. And that's, that's the next issue I'll be asking. So I've been asking a lot of questions. So I really thank her. And the team. But I will have a question for you on the next question.
Thank you. So I think there was some public comment asking for kind of timelines on feedback. And I hope that, that, that tonight, the public has, has been better informed on that. And if not, we welcome your emails, phone calls, feel free to have meetings so that you feel completely informed. And if you're an anxious person like me, that your, that, that your anxiety is, is mitigated throughout this process because it is our children, our most valuable, precious asset. And in terms of our work here on the board, I think, thank you to my colleagues for their comments, particularly the parents here, as we are taking this incredibly seriously. We know it's, it's a long road and we are so appreciative of your due diligence, Dr. Kaufman. Yes. So I think, thank you very much. I think we'll go on now to our next item. And we have here, consider approval of LLB contractors. And Julio Oroyo, thank you for beginning.
Thank you very much. So tonight, we are here before you for approval for our lease leaseback contractors. And so we started this process, as I was saying, where we received proposals in September 28th. We interviewed our general contractor firms on the, I'm sorry, we received proposals on the 18th. We conducted our interviews on the 28th. And we had with us our Leonakis, as well as AECOM, we had Trustee Nakatani, we had Superintendent Kaufman, as well as Michelle Rollins and myself, who were part of the interviews. And so we have two firms coming to you tonight. And so with approval tonight, we will then negotiate contracts with the goal of coming back November 2nd to approve those contracts, to be able to start work with the firms. And so really, I think just to summarize the lease leaseback process, one of the main benefits of why we chose this construction method is that it gives us the ability to bring in our general contractor on the front end to work with our architects. And that way, they're collaboratively working together. So we're trying to minimize any, any risks to the district as well as future errors by having those teams work together, having both know-hows and having both capacities in the same room as we develop these projects. And so the GCCI here is for approval for our elementary school sites, which are called our modernizations. So that each of our school sites have projects assigned to them, as well as Flint Construction is also here for the middle school site. So we're hoping for approval tonight and to bring back the contracts in November. And I will just take a second for them to just introduce themselves, just real quick. Just introduce yourself in the firm.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Nathan. I'm with Flint. We're a general contractor. Very excited to be here. And I probably will note also that I will probably be in this room, the one that is most down and dirty on this site, you know? I personally will have the dirt on my fingers at some point. And I work outside fathers and daughters and interns and apprentices. And, you know, the safety of my colleagues and the community is so important to us. And we would never even access a site, let alone put a shovel in the ground without knowing that it's gone through the procedures and the validations that I trust, very much so as well. So very excited to be here and, and the opportunity to work with everyone here as well.
I'm Brandon Gentry with GCCI. You know, we really appreciate you guys considering us, appreciate you guys selecting us. I think it's going to be a great process. Like Julio was saying, the lease leaseback is definitely the way to go. It's a really collaborative process and we look forward to it. So we thank you guys very much.
All right. So before we begin, we have no public comment at this time. So now we'll open it up to board comments or questions before we vote.
I have five questions. So this is very straightforward. What site is included in the lease leaseback? Does it also include a site for the temporary housing and, and, and everything else?
So each contractor will be awarded one contract. The contract for the middle school will include the entire project, including the interim housing.
Okay.
And the other contract will include all modernizations.
Okay. So my next question is financing by the contractor. There is a default. So what, what happens if the contractor defaults? And it says the lender will assign or sell the obligation to another contractor? Or who assumes that obligation? And how do we feel comfortable with it?
So I believe it's at the very beginning of the draft contract right now, there is a clause saying that there are going to be negotiations over the next few months or over a certain period of time to define all the terms of the financing internally, the lease leaseback contract. So at this time, we don't know what those default clauses would be. But as we move forward and negotiate and have a better idea of what the financing structure looks like, then the contract will be amended. So again, there is a clause at the beginning of the contract that, that states exactly this, that there will be an amendment before the district enters a GMP.
So I, I trust Sharon, I trust Elizabeth, but, but, but what kind of financial due diligence typically do you do on, on the contractors that we pick?
So during, when we review, reviewed the proposals, there was a confidential section of the proposal that included financial data from each company. There was also, also, we looked obviously at experience and type, size, scale, type of projects each company does. So review, during the review process, there was vetting out of all the criteria.
And I have two more questions, sorry. There was also an abatement clause, but since this is a site, you know, to be occupied by precious children and teachers and, and other employees, do we have any further assurance of safety during the construction for our children?
So abatement is generally included in a contract for existing conditions because of unknown, but also part of the process, which is part of the school process or school construction process, we always start by doing a ASMAT report. So essentially, early next year, we're actually, we're going to start early on the modernizations. We already selected a company, and I believe that was two or three months ago, to do ASMAT testing. So once we define more like on the modernization, what the demolition work, what we're going to touch looks like, we're going to give that information to that firms. They're going to go to the site, do some sampling, like literally taking paint samples and pipe samples and insulation samples. And they're going to test all this and tell us if there are bests. Do we need to remediate anything we're going to touch? And that will be part of the project ultimately where there will be an abatement phase and an ASMAT remediation phase.
Okay. So my final question, I'm so sorry. I know, I know.
We're giving you two extra.
Okay. So the financing charge, that I try to understand that language, it seemed like it said 10% per month? Seemed crazy. I, I kind of had a heart attack over that. And, and if we pay the entire amount upon the completion of the constructions, do we still have to pay this 10%? I mean, it, it seemed like a huge amount.
So again, I just want to reiterate, there is that clause at the beginning of the, of the lease leaseback draft or contract draft that says things will be negotiated and the contract will be amended and all the financing agreements will be in place at GMP or before GMP. This clause, and typically in lease leaseback contracts, the last payment is at the end of construction. There is no extension really. Most districts will pay the last payment at final completion. This is really like a template. This is meant to be a template and this will be negotiated before there is an agreement. This is meant to be a template and this will be negotiated before there is an agreement between the district and the contractors.
Okay. So yeah, I I just had a heart blown over that 10%. I'm like, what? Okay.
Thank you, trustee U. Do we have any other questions or comments from other board members? All right. May I have a motion to approve our two contractors recommended by our trusted advisors? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Passes five zero. Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. And now we are going to go on to item three under facilities. Consider Mill Valley Middle School Site Validation Location. Julio Arroyo, please take it away.
I'll I'll page that to Julio.
All right.
So I think one of the one of the beauties of the process that we're in, although I'm I worry greatly about all the emails I forward from the community to the members of this team, because I never know who to send it to, is that, you know, we we learn as we go. So, you know, as I'm listening tonight, the site selection template can probably be translated into a site validation template that shows where the overlap is. And we could bring that back to the at the October 25th meeting so that people understand a little bit more about what our process is. Because I think everybody's looking for just that visual example. And you all who know the work don't know how to unpack it very well. And those of us who don't know the work don't know what to ask. So again, I appreciate the input from the community because I think it's helping us do better at what we do. So given that I've already addressed this, really, the goal here is we want to be, we want the board to give the staff direction to start spending money on analyses of the at the middle school site. As I mentioned earlier, next month, we will be bringing back some ideas and some costs for the board to consider, whether or not they would like to continue a parallel process at another site. You know, but in this case, we we don't want to lose time on starting those assessments and validations because we want to avoid escalation costs. So I will hand it over to the team now.
Thank you. So like Dr. Kaufman was saying, so we're going to be reviewing here our site validation for tonight. And I'm going to have our Leonakis team, which is Laura, Nas, and Mark Jewell. They are our architect and engineering team. And so they're going to go through the slides today to, as a follow up to last month on far side validation. And so we will all have all have them get started to kind of go through the presentation.
Yeah, next slide.
Agenda. Okay. You've heard the Measure G update. We do want to follow up on the September board meeting for the site selecting the site for validation and determining grade level configuration for the interim housing as separate items for discussion today. And then looking at the board actions and also sharing with you next steps.
All right. So this timeline you've seen before, we've updated it to add a little more, a few more items that are shown in gray, essentially kind of outlining where the board decisions have been and where they will continue to be. So today, October 12th, we're we're selecting contractors. We're looking at site validation and location of interim housing. And then the current plan is to have a final option for design in February. Again, that path may change depending on where we're going at this point and doing the due diligence we need to do. But just wanted wanted to remind everybody what the timeline looks like and what has been done and what's coming up.
So thank you. Anna distributed the engagement process that's on the next slide. And that was recognizing that we're very early in the process, but also that you'll be seeing us a lot as we continue to give the feedback that we learn monthly, not only to the board, but at a series of community meetings, as well as a steering committee for the programming and design. That helps us then be able to cite the middle schools so that the due diligence of our consulting engineers and environmental engineers can target their assessment. And so starting in November, we will begin to engage the steering committee.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and the public. Just to introduce myself to everybody that may not know me. My name is Abraham Ballin. I am with a San Francisco nonprofit that centers around authentic communications. And we supported in facilitating the September 27th Community Forum. So quickly, just want to recap the feedback that was heard. Then for the Mill Valley School District Team, ACOM, Leonakis, and our into action team. With me today is our Executive Director Andrea Baker, right there in the front row, and our Deputy Director Kiari Bolding. Just wanted to quickly introduce them as well. To highlight the feedback, we heard on the site selection process and communications, questions that were focused on a site analysis, cost analysis of Edna McGuire versus the current middle school site, the decision making process, the presentation mediums used for the community forum, and what decision would be made on the October 12th Board Meeting. On the proposed schedule, we heard questions that were focused on the next on the schedule for next steps, the order of operations taken taking into consideration analyses, the middle school decision points in October and November, and the proposed timeline for middle school construction. On environmental concerns, we heard questions that were focused on the toxicity levels of the middle school site, the sea level rise data that exists currently, the proposed approach to sustainability soils and the sharing of studies with the Mill Valley population. One second as I flip my page. On safety concerns, we heard questions that were focused on mitigation strategies for construction hazards, noise, dust, emergency exits, ADA accessibility, and indoor air circulation. On educational implications, we heard questions that were focused on the educational impacts of being next to a construction site, noise mitigation strategies, the rationale of keeping schools K through five and the middle school grades six through eight, courtyards, and how to ensure students have enough room to eat lunch and socialize. Finally, on the gymnasium, athletics, classrooms, and the cafeteria, we heard questions that were focused on if the middle school site would include a new kitchen, an updated gym, and the use of portables. Lastly, we heard additional community questions centered on sharing any comprehensive data analyses, consistency on what was on the facility, the the facility's master plan and Measure G, the roles of contractors, learnings from Edna McGuire, and possible implications of the proposed middle school site not being immediate to the street. Thank you.
To reiterate, the purpose of the presentations today are twofold. One is for us to move forward with the middle school site as a validation for the location of the new middle school. And secondly, to confirm a plan to maintain the current grade level configuration of six eight for the interim housing wherever that ends up. We wanted to give a little bit of history on the site validation process because, as Dr. Kaufman said, while it's true that we haven't begun the SEQA process for this site, it is also true that there is quite a bit of data available in the public realm around this piece of property and generally the environmental concerns. We started with the 2009 facilities master plan that identified a replacement middle school at this location. The 2018 facilities assessment that identified the deficiencies in this current location, the 2021 facilities master plan that again located a new middle school on this footprint. And then, of course, the Measure G bond language. So the 2009 facilities master plan is shown there, as is the 2021 facilities master plan, both identifying reconstruction or replacement of the existing middle school. As did the Measure G bond language, reconfiguration and reconstruction of facilities at the middle school site, including demolition, storage, and temporary facilities during reconstruction. And it was generally to bring back to the community that the bond language supports the proposals that we've brought forward thus far. We also located, looked at the current location of the Mill Valley Middle School in the consideration of why it's a continues to be a good location for the middle school as centrally located, adequately sized, and very accessible by students. 61% of the students are currently accessing the middle school by walking, bicycling, skateboarding, et cetera. And then acknowledging that in studying the Mill Valley Middle School site, there is no preconception about which location or where on the site that that is best held so that we can do the due diligence over the next several months for the best location and the lowest mitigations required for working at this site. We also shared with the public the reasons for Edna McGuire being a less desirable location. One was the investment the community has already made in the Edna McGuire site and the likely loss of that recent investment because those elementary sites or elementary facilities don't meet current middle school requirements. Closure of an elementary school campus was comes with its own process, but a disruption of programs at all elementary school sites in response. We've mentioned in the past the Tera Marin and other tenants, as well as district maintenance and operations that are on the Edna McGuire site, which would have to be relocated for demolition of that facility. Environmental impacts, including what we see today, increased traffic being key among them, and some agreements that were previously made in past environmental processes with the not only the community, but with in terms of mitigation. And then the known archaeological impacts of the site and what we believe to be the longest implementation scenario, in part because of what would have to be done at all of the elementary schools to start those dominoes moving forward. So in that, we have considerations and areas for validation based on community questions and concerns. And Mark's going to begin to go through some of those.
So I'll give you an overview of some of our ongoing considerations. You'll notice that many of these have already come up tonight. So some of it will be redundant. Some of these slides you've seen before. Some of them we've augmented with a little more information, just to kind of give you a little bit more context. So sea level rise, obviously, we know this is one of the highest, maybe not the highest anymore, but one of the highest concerns for the Mill Valley Middle School site. We've reviewed the current FEMA maps. We've reviewed the 2015 Richardson Bay shoreline study and the subsequent 2017 Bay wave study. And I'll show you some some graphics from that in a second. At this point, the main thing that we're considering is assessing the potential for raising the existing grade over portions of the middle school site, depending on the options that we continue to consider from here on out. So you're from you're all familiar with the campus. And just a little little context as we start to look at some of these these sea level rise maps. The main building, the lower level of the main building is currently about one foot above the current FEMA 100-year flood elevation. The existing gym is actually about four feet above the current FEMA 100-year flood elevation. And if any of you parked in the west parking lot, that parking lot is currently at the FEMA 100-year flood elevation. This is the current FEMA map. Obviously, these are published in cycles. This is the one that we're working off of right now. If we were to actually build something today, and you can see that the areas in blue represent the the 100-year flood elevation. The Bay wave study looked at three different sea level rise potentials from year 2030 through 202100, each with and without concurrent storm surge. This first one, scenario one, is 10-inch rise without any storm surge. And we're not going to show you all of these, but we're going to just flip through a couple. This is the 10-inch rise with the storm surge. And as you can see in the map, even at scenario two, the eastern portion of the site could be regularly flooded with storm surge. Moving on to scenario five, kind of skipping the in between. The Bay wave study actually identifies Mill Valley Middle School as vulnerable in scenario five, even though some of the earlier graphics suggest that there could be other issues. And of course, scenario six with the storm surge. Sewer plant. We we understand that the smells from the sewer plant are unpleasant. And once we get into the design phase, we'll be attempting to, I think we've said this before, limit outdoor circulation as much as possible. And we will also be studying override controls for mechanical systems for improved air filtration. Just an excerpt here from 2018 report. The testing from the Bay area air quality management district indicates safe levels of hydrogen sulfide. But we do understand that the odor is having an impact to the school. And so we are thinking about it as we move forward. And soils, this is, we've talked a lot about this one tonight. We do know that there was a landfill closed in the 60s. We know there is landfill material on the middle school site. The extent of this material will be confirmed through the forthcoming environmental assessment that Sandrine described. We have, I think everyone knows this, we've reviewed extensive documentation related to previous environmental reports and soil and air tests, you know, over the last 40 years. Some of it related to the construction of the Mill Valley Community Center and adjacent fields, based on the information from the State Water Resource Control Board. And this is sort of a follow up of a conversation I had at our last meeting. We believe that during construction, debris and mud under the western half of the existing building where we are right now was excavated and replaced with compacted fill. And therefore, it is likely that only the eastern end of the building is underlying with debris fill. This will, of course, need to be confirmed as we move forward. And then finally, we've also reviewed the county post closure land use guidance document and know that it will require at a minimum a historical study and field investigation, a waste excavation and management plan, and a maintenance and monitoring plan. We kind of cobbled this graphic together for you from the 2017 geotechnical report with the sectional view placed below it for context. In the most recent, Geotech included a single boring with samples and three cone penetration tests to determine what the what the general condition of the soil was around the existing building. Obviously, a more complete geotechnical will be performed once the project site is selected. In the section view, we overlaid the main building and the gymnasium so you could get a better understanding of how to read that. The thing to keep in mind with this graphic in the section is that the vertical scale is exaggerated for clarity. It does not match the horizontal scales. But you can see the artificial fill, the young bay mud, and then the bedrock down below. And the last consideration to go over here, based on what we heard at the last community meeting, we know there are concerns about having students on an active construction site. We know that there's going to be appropriate testing and mitigation in advance of construction. And we're still actively exploring alternate alternative locations for interim housing. Again, Laura said it, I think Sandrine said it, transparency and plans for mitigation of landfill issues will be per industry standards.
So again, our the recommendation is approval of the current Mill Valley Middle School site for validation so that we can move into those studies we referenced and take the studies where that we have available to us today and bring them up to 2023, 2024 standards. We did want to share with you a video of what a phasing plan could look like. We often use these to help communicate with the public about the logistics around working on an active site and how that might work. This one happens to show the interim housing at this location, but it does start to give you a sense of scale and how we begin to imagine what this looks like. So beginning with the current campus, you can see the building we're in currently. All the existing spaces as well as some existing modular buildings, we've placed interim portables on the hard court across the creek in this scenario while we build the existing school. Our contractor partners are obviously will be intimately involved in this, but the opportunity to create removal of portables, build additional spaces and potentially even identify a future multipurpose room are all part of the discussion, and we use these 3D graphics throughout the process in order to be able to better communicate everything from logistics and data we're receiving, but also to help imagine what the future will look like.
Well, thank you. And now what we're going to do is entertain public comment, and we do have four community members who I'll call up, and please remember that you have three minutes for your comments and identify yourself and what school you're with or affiliation. So first, let's have Kirsten Kennel, please, Kirsten.
Hello there. I had two children that went through Edna. We were there during construction, and they went through the middle school, and now they're both at TAM. My other affiliation is I have been a volunteer with Safe Routes to School off and on for seven years. So I guess my question that you can't answer tonight is about, you know, the flooding and the Miller, Blythe Dale, et cetera, because when I look at the flood maps and the traffic flow, it seems that no matter where the middle school is located, even if it's moved to the Edna location, you're still not, 80% of us still are not going to get there without going underwater. So that, I just want to bring to the attention of the public that that is an issue at both locations. It is probably beyond the school district, but it needs to be worked in coordination with the city. My second comment is about traffic, and with Safe Routes to School, we study this a lot. I want to bring to people's attention that the city did a wonderful traffic report in April 2016. Very well researched, incredible amount of data. Over the years, I'll refer to it. I'll pull it up periodically, and it highlights where the congestion is, how just a little bit more traffic during peak times can make everything gridlocked. And I encourage people to look at that because if you, you think it's easy to just move from this central site to put all the kids at the Edna location, and maybe due to environmental concerns, that does wind up being something we have to do, but I'm just hoping that that's a Plan B, because I think the traffic concerns might be worse than people anticipate. You're talking about doubling the amount of cars going to Edna site, if that's a middle school. You're talking about right now Strawberry, if that's the site that has to double and if TAM Valley has to double to accommodate Edna closure. Right now, half the, in this study, half the kids that went to Strawberry had to go over 101. So you're talking now 75% of the kids are going to have to be traveling over 101. I think people are going to underestimate the severity of the gridlock in this town if you start closing elementary schools, because if you want to make traffic less, you actually have to have more schools so that they're walkable. The final comment would be, I think the, having the middle school close to the high school, the two biggest schools near each other. Most families have children that are, you know, two, three years apart. It really makes the parent drop off involve less, less driving, because your, your kids are now clustered closer together. So just bring those concerns. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Great timing. All right, next, David Toomey, please, David.
Hello, everybody. My name is David Toomey. My throat is dry. I am a father of an Edna first grader. I have two more younger than her who will go to Edna as well. And I live on Lomita, and so I was just minding my own business today when thinking that this was a done deal already that Edna had been removed and was told that maybe it wasn't, and so I thought I would come down here and represent the Edna families that are often accused of being too quiet. I think I learned a little something from trustee Kat's opening comments. Those were beautiful. Thank you for sharing them. Thought they were great. My focus is on, this is a California distinguished school. It's important. It's an anchor. It's something that we need. It's part of our community. It's important to us. Then as somebody who lives on Lomita, the traffic comments are, I mean, they hit really close to home. There's, there's two roads in. It's already gridlocked. It can already take 45 minutes to get across town. It feels to me like adding twice as many people is going to gridlock my neighborhood, shut it down completely, and limit our access to facilities. So thank you for your recommendation. I hope you stick with it, and I appreciate you guys giving me the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, Erin Fraser. Erin.
Hello, I'm Erin Fraser. I'm a teacher at Edna McGuire. I was at the September board meeting and saw that the board gave direction to eliminate Edna as a future site for the middle school, or as a possibility as a future site for the middle school, and I want to say again, like I did that night, that I support this direction. And I also just want to mention, like David did, that a lot of people listened to that meeting and read the report attached to this board meeting and assumed that Edna was still not in the running to be a possible site for the future middle school, and I think many of them stayed home tonight. So there is probably a lot of other people who have feelings about that that aren't here. It's clear from the work that Dr. Kaufman, Mr. Arroyo, and the EE Comm team have already done that adequate environmental reports have and will be completed to ensure the safety and viability of the site. In addition to being the adequate size for a middle school that houses all of Mill Valley's sixth through eighth grade students, this property is ideally situated for traffic control, as Kirsten Kennel just explained. It's in the middle of town and easily accessed by East Blythe Dale, Sycamore, and Miller. The same cannot be said for Edna McGuire. I'm in agreement with all of the points that were included in the board presentation tonight that explain why Edna is not a reasonable choice for a future middle school. Mill Valley voters supported Measure C, which provided millions of dollars to build a new Edna McGuire just over a decade ago. It would be an irresponsible use of those funds to overhaul the district's newest site so soon after it was built. Elementary and middle school classrooms are not interchangeable, and significant expensive changes would need to be made in order for Edna to be a, to be suitable for middle school students. I could go on about the points in the presentation, but I feel I must speak about the potential impact on the Edna McGuire community itself. I'm a teacher at Edna. I have taught there for 12 years. I grew up on Shell Road, and I went to Edna McGuire from kindergarten to fifth grade. Edna is my heart and it's my home. It's hard for me to even put into words what dismantling Edna would mean for the people who teach, learn, grow, and play there every day. We have a strong, tight-knit community of 430 students, nearly 1,000 parents, and 84 staff members who have worked together and known each other in and outside of classrooms for decades. Removing students from their homeschool with their close friends and teachers who have known them since they entered school in TK could leave an indelible mark on their educational experience. Relocating teachers and staff to four different sites across the district would unnecessarily break up longstanding teaching teams who have well-established collaborative relationships. The impact on student learning at all sites would be felt for years to come. I urge you to stick with your initial thoughts that were shared at the September board meeting. The new middle school should be built on the existing middle school property. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Blam claps don't have to make clicking sounds. Thank you. All right, appreciate it. Next, Alexandra Duval. Thank you, Alexandra.
I was supposed to wash my hair tonight, but here I am, so pardon, pardon this. My name is Alex Duval. I am a parent, and I live on East Blythe Dale, right near Edna McGuire School. Actually, on a frontage road, which people drive too fast on because they use it as a shortcut. Okay, so I just want to, want to say I went to my very first back-to-school night at Edna McGuire this year as a parent, not as a teacher, because I did teach there. And I was sitting there, and there was a joke made in front of all of the parents about Edna McGuire not being the middle school choice. And you could kind of feel this like ripple go through the room of like, oh, I guess we should be anxious about that because now we're joking about it. So I spent the next few weeks stressing about it and bugging my husband about it. And then I heard after the September meeting, it wasn't, was a no-go. Then at soccer on Tuesday, I was sitting with some people, and it came up again, and I, I feel like all of our schools in Mill Valley are so special, but I feel that it's unfortunate that I'm up here needing to shout from the rooftops how special Edna is because it's the school that we're talking about here. And when we talk about a site, oftentimes, it's like, it's a school site. Edna is a school of over 480 students, 84 staff members. We have two MCOE classes there, and those classes and those children and teachers have become part of our community. We have DEI committees at all of our sites and in our district as a whole to support that. And Edna provides that space for those families and those people. I know that our lovely Julie and Erin said earlier that all of our students are getting to go to Walker Creek this year, which is super exciting. I was very lucky to go to Walker Creek when I was a teacher. And one of the things they would say there is, the counselors would say, okay, kids, like every time this week we say there's a challenge, all the kids have to yell, bring it on! And it's a really beautiful thing, because they'll just randomly say it, and you'll hear all these little voices, bring it on, it's a challenge. This sounds like a challenge, a big challenge. And no one wants their kids breathing in fumes or toxicity or anything like that, so other than those kind of testing, it's inconvenient. A lot of the teachers were there when we rebuilt Edna and we taught in portables. It happens, and there is noise, and then you have a beautiful, beautiful school. Okay, thank you for everything you do. I just want to keep talking because I have 16 more seconds. Yeah, I really appreciated your, your comment at the beginning, Natalie, and thank you for all of your hard work. And good night.
Thank you, Alexandra. All right, that concludes our public comment, unless we have any one, we have one more? Fun line? No fun line? All right, thank you very much. And now I'd like to open this up for board questions, starting with trustee you. Question.
So I am not suggesting closing Edna, but I want to discuss, in case we have no other site, you know, how easy is it to close a school the size of Edna? And how could we accommodate these 400-plus kids through all the other schools? How, I mean, how would that impact our construction in terms of timeline? You know, let's, let's say that this site is not possible. We could only have Edna. You know, how would that all happen? Because, you know, I believe in fiscal responsibility. I don't think we should go ahead and spend millions upon millions validating two sites. And before we have that discussion, I want to understand exactly what does it take to close a school like Edna? And, and, and don't please, you know, because, yeah.
So, so thank you for that question, and I think I'll direct that to Dr. Kaufman.
So, and the team is welcome to join in, but closing the campus, we've just gone through the site selection and validation process that's involved in vetting a school. So anytime you move more than 25% of a population to another population, you have to go through that same SEQA process to make sure, you know, that the traffic mitigation, the environmental hazards, et cetera. So we would be looking at, again, depending on which number of students went where, you know, triggering SEQA. When we look at our current max capacity, and that doesn't include, I don't believe it includes our flex spaces, our art, music, PE, you know, all the things that we do that make our program outstanding. If we just went with max capacity, we would still have, I believe, like 68 students that we couldn't find housing for. So we, we, and, and that's without, you know, that's taking every space on every campus, so clearly we'd have to add portables. But the larger concern to me is having just gone through the process of closing a school. It's an in-depth process. It takes about seven months if you aren't run out of town before it ends, because you're looking at, you have to engage a committee. You have to do what's called the 7-11 process. You have to, again, do the validation of other locations. And while you're going through that, you're, you know, destroying the hearts of people. And so when you think about taking one school and putting it into, and Edna's our largest school, and putting it into four different schools and the impact on children and communities as we consider ourselves a community district, it's pretty, pretty significant. I don't really can measure that. I don't know that there's a dollar amount that goes with that or a timeline. But I don't think we're, our identity right now is about being a four-school district, elementary district. So something to think about.
And it's the teachers too. I mean, we may have to make some cuts. I mean, my guess is our classroom sizes will likely go up because we could build so much space in small schools, at small schools like Park and, 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 and Old Mill. And, and, and what would happen to the teachers? Because I am sure that we may not be able to find spaces for all of them. Am I misreading the situation or?
I, I think anything's, with money, anything's possible, right? So I think, you know, we would do our best in any scenario to keep our class sizes, but our campuses would be compacted, and they probably wouldn't be very balanced. So, you know, the, the situation where we're trying to avoid having like classes of three grade levels morph into two grade levels and, you know, just all the, all the things that you went through last spring in terms of trying to balance sites, that would be an ongoing concern for us because we would have imbalanced sizes of our schools.
Trustee Abdoli.
In the interest of time, I have a comment, which is that, given the, you know, we've been part of the Strawberry community for many, many years now and intend to be, and that is my community. You know, those are the parents I know, the teachers I know, the principal, the staff. My, my children have grown up with those kids, so that is something we value. And I know that Strawberry is unique compared to the other schools as well. Each one has such an important personality and sense of home. That alone is a reason that I have no interest in changing my views from last time, the construction interests, the traffic. There are so many compounding issues that we have raised here that we've heard from. And I think it's something that I'm very comfortable having further discussions. If there are questions, you know, if community members have questions on why, I feel that Edna, displacing the Edna community is not the appropriate choice. But I, my view has not changed, that that is not a valid site for, for my opinion.
I think we've organically moved to deliberation, so if there is any other board member who would like to share their viewpoint before we vote. Oh, so there is one last question. Okay, trustee you.
So the issue, another issue that's bringing up is why not buy some land? Or build at one of the city of Mill Valley sites, like golf course or tennis? Is that even possible? I mean, my understanding is that city of Mill Valley, we're not city of Mill Valley. We cannot willy-nilly take their land away. Or are there any space in all of Mill Valley that we could acquire? You know, maybe we do whatever, that takeover, you know, what's eminent domain and take over other people's homes to buy land? I mean, is that even feasible in our community?
Superintendent Kaufman, would you like to address that? Question, please. Superintendent Kaufman, would you like to address that? Question, please.
Why aren't you buying? Or like, why don't we take over the golf course? Like, yeah, so we are trying to, I, I just want to make sure we are addressing all of them.
Thank you. You are listening to, to the public and it's a reasonable question. Dr. Kaufman?
And I am not a real estate attorney. However, I believe finding the size of a campus here in this community and purchasing it and then going through the CQ and all of the validations we've just discussed. And getting everybody to agree on where the new facility that we're spending bond money on, because it's not going to be cheap, is going to add time that if we can validate a safe location for our children with existing property will help us save money in the long run because the longer we wait, the higher the escalation costs go. And I think that's the, we're, you know, we're trying to run against time a little bit because we do need to have 85% of the bond money, you know, encumbered spent within the first three years. But what we're trying not to do is lose the opportunity to build because we were deliberating. And I know but folks were initially very impatient that this was taking this long. And so we've been on a very quick pace, intentionally on a very quick pace. This board has been pushed and this team has been pushed because we don't want to lose those opportunities.
Thank you. Trustee Katz and then trustee Nakatani.
Please remind us in the bond language, is there anything accounting for purchasing of new property? Should it actually be a real thing that, that exists in Mill Valley and not just a unicorn?
I believe we have language in there that allows us to pivot. So.
So, thank you. Trustee Nakatani. So you were, you were next.
It's not so much a question, it's more of a comment. And I know we're not really, you know, bringing in personal experiences. But I'm going to say, you know, my children, my oldest child started at Edna McGuire during construction. And Dr. Rollins could, you know, verify, but I believe our C beds was over 3,000 at that point. Is that right? In about 2012? Our enrollment was 3,000 children.
It's a little high, but yeah, it was, it's definitely significantly more than I thought.
And so the difference today of 2,200 versus close to 3,000 is the equivalent of three park schools right now, three old mill schools. And I think three strawberries, right? I can't remember. Yeah, today, in today. So I think right now for many of our community who moved to Mill Valley, maybe during the pandemic or just prior or maybe recently, don't have this long history that it was only 10 years ago that there were five kindergarten classes at Edna McGuire, 24 students a class. Park School had 30 kids in their fourth grade classes that year. There wasn't a single extra room in the entire district using our five schools and this school to house any more students. Personally, my child and her friends and everyone that she met at Edna McGuire loved the construction because as kindergarteners, they cheered the roofers on when they were roofing. I think a construction site's, you know, it's just a great experience and a unique one. You know, I know people are nervous about that. So I wanted to touch on that, like, and I've looked at C beds over the past, not just decade, two decades, I've looked way past that and it has absolutely ebbed and flowed. We're at low tide right now for that. It's going to come back and it would be short sighted to say, let's close down this school, push everyone around and oh my gosh, and yeah, I don't know, I'm just going to say 20 years, we have again, 800 more students we need to house. So I think, so I'm not changing my position either. So I do want to say that, you know, we are part of our own individual elementary school community, but we are a bigger community. And, you know, we try not to do things that harm or impact others. So to make decisions that don't impact yourself, but impact other people, I think is, it's a hard one to swallow as well. And lastly, I wanted to touch a little bit because we've been talking about dollars per square foot or, you know, general, we've been talking about quantitative data. You know, let's look at Edna McGuire. Well, we've got, and I'm making this up, 50,000 square feet of school. So we would need to build another 50,000 square feet of school and that costs this much. And we need to remodel this at that cost this much. But what's missing from all that, and we can put it into a construction schedule, but what's completely missing is the architecture. Because architecture is made for humans and it's made for human use. And it's specific to those humans. So Edna McGuire is a successful school, it's a great school because it's made for a K5 environment. It's not even made for TK5. So we're having to modify for that. You know, it's just that small change. It's got a dedicated K wing, a dedicated one wing, first grade wing, second grade wing. And then it's got a bigger building that had third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade upstairs because they were the big kids. You know, it is well designed for its users. And I think to not know how that school functions and to say, well, we can put science classes in there, we could put, you know, core classes, you know, our ELA and our history classes together. And I'm thinking of the middle school curriculum. And to say, well, we're going to take a 68 interdisciplinary curriculum and we're going to put half that in these modified classrooms and then we'll build the other half here. You know, schools are successful because they're built for the humans that use them. And the spaces and, you know, how children learn and how they grow and how they can use a space. And they're not just classrooms, hallways and bathrooms. Any school can, you know, that's not, that's any school. But our community passes bond measure. We are building a school for our middle schoolers to give them the best education experience possible. And we don't do that by shoehorning into an existing building. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nakatani. Oh, clam claps, clam claps. Thank you, thank you. So that your board members can have, maintain their open minds. And so we definitely are in deliberation. And I think that I'm asking if there's anyone else who wants to share their thoughts before we vote. Trustee you, I see your hand.
You know, I, I think this is not just about middle school kids. You know, we have responsibility to the entire community. You know, I like to highlight, I, I hear, oh, we, the parents will pay for this. I mean, I, I don't know what percentage of entire Mill Valley are families with little kids, but my understanding is about 20%. It's 80% of our community who don't have kids who approve these bond measure. We have to be responsible. I mean, it's, it's beyond this. It's beyond as a mom, I care about my son more than anything else, but I understand as a board member, I have to think about the entire community and not just my son's Tim Valley Elementary Community, but Edna Community as well. So I, I'm more focused on the children across the district and how well they can do. But also, I am also as a board member, I'm concerned about the legal liability. And, and, and I hear flippant things like, oh, why don't we just take over Marin Horizon? Why don't we just take over Terra Marin? We sign contracts, we sign lease contracts. My understanding with sites like Marin Horizon is we have to give them four year notice. You know, four year notice. So to move, move any kind of kids to Marin Horizon location, we have to wait four years. And that means this process will be delayed four more years. And that's, that's additional dollars that we need to be asking to our community members. I mean, I don't think that's the right thing as a board member to ask. And, and I don't think we should be willy nilly thinking about, oh, let's just, you know, just, just forget about all these contracts we sign. Let's just reneg them and, and do everything else. But one thing I do wonder is this. So let's say we do all the due diligence, all the work on this site to validate this site. What if we find, you know, that it's just not buildable? Like, what do we do then? Right? Because is there anything we could mitigate the worst possible toxic study that we find about the dust, construction, water levels? I mean, do you feel comfortable all these risks could be mitigated that, you know, that we're, we're going ahead? Or do we need a separate contingency plan? In case the site doesn't work out? I mean, should we be thinking about it? I mean, I'm always classes half empty, distressed kind of person. So do we need to be thinking about contingencies or what do we do? Because I understand there are very few other sites that we could move to, but what if this turns out to be as toxic as people have feared? What do we do?
All right. So we're going to have superintendent Kaufman answer first and then she can pass if there's additional information that you need from our panel.
I think that's partly why we want to bring forward some parallel processes to discuss at least. And, you know, we can do more due diligence on a site assessment, but I think we'll know sooner than later about the viability of this site. So again, that's partly the accelerated timeline. Now I'm going to pitch my own idea. I believe, and people think I'm crazy, but if you were a middle school parent, you would like this idea. I believe we should put them all on a cruise ship for interim housing. It's not going to sink. We could send them for some enrichment. They might come back better trained and more worldly and better prepared for high schools. That's, that's my solution. And it won't sink, hopefully.
All right. Well, would our panel like to provide any additional feedback or thoughts?
I think we've talked about this a lot as a team and first of all, as I mentioned at the last meeting, it's a 14 to 18 acres that the Department of Ed would recommend for a middle school of this size. I know enough about your community to know that 14 to 18 contiguous acres is not easy or inexpensive. I, I think the other piece is that we will know relatively quickly if there is a pivot going to be required. Between now and when we do the conceptual design in February, we're going to be able to bring on board the environmental consultant that Sandrine mentioned. We'll be able to mine the existing data, target the new data that we need and bring back to you the strategies for mitigation that as we see them. So I, I think moving forward in this way doesn't mean the pivot can never happen and that it actually can happen, you know, in the next quarter of a year. And we can know more definitively. Obviously, CQ will take longer than that. But boy, we can preempt a lot of what we'll learn in the CQ process.
Thank you very much. So we're very close to a vote, but do we have one last final question? Trustee you.
So since, since we all seem to agree that we do not want to close Edna, right? So what's the pivot? I mean, I, I just want to know, I'm, I, I kind of want to know all sorts of negative possibilities here. So what's the pivot? Is it like rebuilding this in a way that's not going to disturb the soil? Or is it kicking out Edna kids? I mean, what, what is the pivot? I, I just want to understand what we'll be hit with in the worst possible case. Distress investor here. I always have to think about the worst possible.
What's my? We're going to get the best answer with an unknown future lying, lying ahead. Your best possible answer might be?
I think the best possible answer right now is that we believe that everything on this site is mitigatable. Whether that is to your comfort level is a question for when we have more data. But with what we know right now, I can tell you in 35 years of doing schools in California, I've never done one that didn't have some sort of mitigation for either metals or methane or pesticides or some other thing. So unless there is something egregious that hasn't been brought forward, we believe today that things, that these issues will be mitigatable.
So I'm sorry, my last question. So as a mom who happens to be a board member, so my son will be directly impacted as other people here. How do you, what do you do with the dust? Let's say we have to dig through all that metal that is below six feet on the ground here. We dig through construction. We're trying to, you know, set foundation. Are those, like, how volatile are these heavy metals that could be nailed? And, and, and how do you mitigate that in the construction site?
So those will all be specifically outlined in the mitigation measures in CQ. So again, I, I don't want to presuppose that. There's everything from watering to encapsulation to, I mentioned last time, a bitch of thing, members that encapsulate the soil. There's a lot of potential. Those will all be outlined as part of the CQ mitigation measures, whether it's construction related mitigations that happened during the construction process, or whether it's mitigations that are permanent mitigations for the construction. We can't possibly anticipate those now, but we've seen many of them over the course of decades of school design.
Thank you. Superintendent Kaufman?
Yes, and I can tell you that there are two 10,000 acre parcels to know, it's never mind, they're not even acres, they're square feet, forget it.
That's going to be one tall school.
That's a quarter acre, we're told. Okay. Keep looking, Dr. Kaufman. In the meantime, I I'd like to have a motion to approve the validation location here at the Mill Valley Middle School. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you very much for all your hard work on this. And for everyone for listening, I know that we have one more item here. And, but do certainly appreciate your your patience as these are important questions. So the last item under facilities is consider approval of 68 grade level configuration for middle school interim housing. So we are talking only about the configuration, not where the sixth through eighth grade students might be housed. Julio Oreo, Julio Oreo, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight, we're here to see our staff recommendations retain current sixth to eighth grade level configuration for middle school during construction and interim housing. And we're asking for approval to maintain that.
Okay, we do have some public comments. Actually, three folks and perhaps a, no, we have three, we have someone online. So let's begin with Julie Bremer. Julie Bremer, come on up. You will have three minutes.
Hi again, I'm Julie Bremer. I teach first grade at Edna McGuire. I have been a teacher for over 20 years. Edna McGuire has been my home since I was a student teacher here. I'm also a mom of three Mill Valley, three Mill Valley School District students. I've got a sixth and eighth grader here at the middle school and I have a fourth grader who is so excited and appalled at the thought of not going to the middle school in sixth grade. I just wanted to express that the sixth through eighth grade students should be kept together with the middle school as it's being built. Middle school teaching positions are unique in that teachers often teach the same subject across different grades. In some cases, teachers teach multiple subjects and multiple grades. There would not be enough teachers with the appropriate credentials to accompany sixth graders to the different elementary school sites across the district during that interim housing. It would be unreasonable to put this burden on Dr. Kaufman, Mr. Chu and our HR department, especially for such a short period of time. In addition, sixth through eighth graders have a unique developmental need that are best met by our highly qualified middle school staff. The MVMS staff has worked together to create a vibrant learning experience for their students and to separate the sixth graders from the middle school community and culture would be detrimental to their educational experience and social emotional growth. I urge you to keep the sixth through eighth grade configuration during interim housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next Gina Fagan. Gina? All right. Thank you. Let's see if she is on Zoom. Gina? Okay, well, we'll keep looking last. Julie Mohit, is she, she's online. Thank you Julie, when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, it, it's speak, speak loudly.
Okay, can you hear me now?
That's better. Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Juliette Mohit. I'm a teacher at the middle school currently teaching sixth grade. And I just wanted to both thank you for your thoughtful discussion tonight and also comment on the importance of keeping sixth through eighth grades together on the same site during the interim, wherever that may be. I have a few reasons. The first one is that as Julie Bremer pointed out, teachers teach across grades. And that's especially true for teachers who teach electives. And if we separated the sixth graders and put them at the elementary schools, it would impact those students' abilities to take some of the wonderful electives that our program offers, including technology, music and arts, foreign language, world languages. It would also impact the sixth grade students by limiting access to additional resources. The SDC program and activities and clubs, including the school newspaper, the GSA, Global Connections, Mathletes, and so much more that they get by being part of. and so much more that they get by being part of the sixth through eighth grade community. And not to forget our elementary school students, it would also impact the fifth graders because currently they have wonderful leadership opportunities. And if we leave the sixth graders with them, the fifth graders will not get those leadership opportunities because the sixth graders will be the president of the student body of Old Mill, the president of the student body of Strawberry. And so we'll be taking away from our fifth graders' experiences as well. So I just wanted to say, for those reasons and so many more, I really hope that you stick with the uh recommendations that Julio Oreo said to keep the sixth through eighth graders together. Thank you so much for everything you do and no cruise ships because faculty are not gonna go for that. Sorry, Dr. Kaufman.
All right, thank you Julie. All right, that concludes our public comment. And now um we'll open it up for questions, questions? No questions then deliberation, deliberation before we vote. Um trustee Abdoli.
I just add to Juliette's comment about, she focused on uh teachers who teach electives. But I know multiple um, multiple math teachers who teach across grades at the middle school. And so it is part of our kids' core learning and instruction and not just like electives, which I think too many people who maybe don't have their kids in, in that setting, um, kind of sounds like an optional thing. And uh this is just part of the, you know, middle school sphere, experience and curriculum and instruction. So um it's, it's not something that's easily shifted by any sense of word.
Any other comments before we vote? Yes, trustee you.
I spent some time over the weekend asking parents of middle school children what their experience had been like. And one thing I realized was it's not just about the classes studying sixth grade. Middle school kids get to join all sorts of different groups that, that just isn't going to be possible. It's part of a lot more grown-up educational experience that they get to join clubs, you know, um, get to go on a mountain bike team, you know, a, a, and, 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 and it just is so much more enriched um educational experience that I'd hate to, and I'm not just echoing my son who, who wants to go to middle school. But um I, I just hate to take that away, one year of that enriched experience away from the children.
All right, well, may I have a motion to approve the sixth through eighth grade configuration for the middle school interim housing? Second, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, it passes. Now, thank you very much and thank you so much for your dedicated time tonight. And now we move to board operation, excuse me, financial, business and financial matters. Jay, developer fee accounting report. Dr. Rollins will present this item. Thank you.
Great, thank you. This is um required by government code section 66006. It requires local agencies, including school districts, to annually report their accounting fees. And so these are the fees um for the prior fiscal year 2223. They were presented last month with the unaudited actuals. And so they have been available to the public online since September 15th. And so with that, uh, we are asking for approval of the developer fee annual report. I will remind um the trustees in the community that we do share our developer fees with the Chamoel Pius Union High School District. We share based on grades and so based on the grades, uh, we do provide them with a 30% um fees of the, of the revenues collected by the district. And so that is submitted to them quarterly. And we also report that um annually as well as a five-year annual report, um, which is required. And our next annual report will not be until 2025.
Well, thank you. Board, do we have any questions or deliberation comments? All right, may I have a motion to approve our dealt developer fee accounting report? I second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you, Dr. Rollins. And now we go to board operations. Consider approval of CBOC bylaws. Dr. Kaufman will present this item and it does require approval.
Yes, so this is an, an area you've had lengthy discussion previously. Uh, and feedback initially from the CBOC members regarding the um cumbersome uh requirement to fill out all aspects of the Form 700 for all their investments, stocks, et cetera. Uh, you know, is really kind of prohibitive for, for members to want to be part of that committee. So in the interest of finding uh a common ground, uh, we have amended the policy uh to just include that they only need to re complete the Form 700 for uh local interest, district, district um connected interest, so.
Hey, thank you. Uh, do we have any board member questions? Any interest, any deliberative comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the CBOC bylaws? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you, Dr. Kaufman. We now move to item number three, the first read of CSBA board policy updates. And Dr. Kaufman will present this item. It is an opportunity for the board to ask questions about the updates.
Yes, so uh our process is to bring forward sample policies that are, are, you're asked to consider for approval. Uh, these are all the first read. Uh, they've been aligned to our local practices as well as the CSBA models, sample standards and uh we are asking for just any questions, either, you know, now or by email between now and the next meeting, um, if you have any questions.
Do we have any board questions? Seeing none at this time, thank you. So just to repeat, this will come back next month for approval, seeing that there are no uh questions or possible additions. However, if board members want to um review and, is there a timeframe if a board member comes up with an idea that they can email you prior to this being finalized?
Probably by next Friday, just so that we can be prepared for the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Kaufman. All right, now we move on to item L, future board items. The governance calendar is attached and trustees can bring forward any future board items for board discussion and vote. Do we have any at this time? Trustee Katz.
I, I don't have any, but given, given everything happening in the world right now, um, just want to highlight and bring back um that we had agreed a few months ago to um get a better understanding what the district is doing from an ethnic studies and particularly related to um Judaism and antisemitism and in the face of rising antisemitism and um just with recent events and uh the absolutely atrocious, atrocious um terrorist attacks, which are never acceptable regardless of where you stand politically, ethnically, religiously. Educating our community and our children is incredibly important. So um just wanna highlight that. I think that's planned for March um to, to talk about that, um, so.
Thank you trustee Katz. All right.
Just highlighting for you all that it's gonna be the state of the student um at the November meeting. So we'll have a light agenda and we'll have some kids, finally.
Excellent, excellent. All right, next we move to M, board reports. Uh trustees, uh, we're allotted three minutes to share. Uh, and why don't we start with trustee Katz? So we'll just come on down towards me.
Um, I think I'm gonna pass for today.
Okay, I think you've shared. Thank you very much, trustee you.
So we've been going to this masters in governance training thing that's been very time-consuming and learning about policies, which was fascinating today. That's all I could say.
Thank you trustee you. Trustee Abdoli. You trustee Abdoli, trustee Nakatani.
Uh, I attended E2 yesterday morning. It was along with masters and went straight from E2 to masters in governance. Um, what came out of E2 was interesting though, is the idea of using Slack within E2. So new trustees uh maybe coming into the E2 role representing their district, don't start off totally in the dark. And with access to the Slack account of their, of the former trustee that had that position, they're able to see all the conversations and all the dialogue and all the back and forth that had already gone on. Because when I joined E2, it was just like, uh, what's going on? Um, and then it, does our district use Slack internally? Do we use Slack at all? No? Okay.
Yeah.
Who does? Sorry? Tech, tech does, okay. Just, that was just a question. Um, that's it.
Thank you. And I um, I also have been getting a lot of the governance uh training and it, what it's been doing is providing us an opportunity to develop a common language, get some new ideas. And I'm looking forward to our next, you know, um, meeting when we can work as a team to revise our handbook and make, make that our own. So I'm excited for that work ahead.
I nominate Michelle for the next Academy Awards of skits, whatever.
We had to do some skits today and I got into it, must be the jet lag.
She was a hilarious high school principal, hilarious.
I was, I was very concerned. Anyway, so all right, thank you. Well, that concludes our board reports. And now we will adjourn at early, oh my, well done, 8:49 PM. Yes, thank you everybody for attending and staying.